We're going to call this Springfield City Council's special regular session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Weber.
Here.
Councillor Mo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Blackwell.
Here.
And Councillor Doyle.
Here.
All right, you want to read the first item before we all, you know, give people some instructions?
Yes, Mayor, the first item is the City Council member and mayor oath of office. And Mary Bridget Smith, this is your item.
All right, so if you want to be sworn in, you need to proceed and sit next to councillor Alex Stout, and they will take us up one at a time to make sure that we get to take the oaths. And then we will follow instructions of the PIO, who's going to want some pictures taken. And I do want to recognize, we have a lot of folks in the room. It is good to see a lot of staff folks, county commissioner level, and a lot of our families here. It's a, it's a pretty exciting day here for the City Council.
All right, well, good evening. We're going to be swearing in new councillors for wards three, four, six, and the mayor. We're going to go in order of ward number and start with councillor Rodley. So councillor Rodley, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Corey Rodley.
I, Corey Rodley.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I support the following.
That I support the following.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The charter ordinances and rules of procedure for the city of Springfield.
The charter ordinances and rules of procedure for the city of Springfield.
And I will faithfully and honorably.
And I will faithfully and honorably.
Perform the duties of Ward Three councillor for the city of Springfield.
Perform the duties of Ward Three councillor for the city of Springfield.
Congratulations, and thanks in advance for your service. Okay, next will be councillor Blackwell for Ward Four. Okay, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Beth Blackwell.
I, Beth Blackwell.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I support the following.
That I support the following.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Oregon.
The charter ordinances and rules of procedure for the city of Springfield.
The charter ordinances and rules of procedure for the city of Springfield.
And I will faithfully and honorably.
And I will faithfully and honorably.
Perform the duties of Ward Four councillor for the city of Springfield.
Perform the duties of Ward Four councillor for the city of Springfield.
Thank you, congratulations. Okay, councillor elect Stout, you ready?
Yes.
All right, raise your right hand, please. I, Ryan Stout.
Ryan.
I, Alan Stout.
Oh, Alan Stout.
Yeah, Ryan, that's good. I, Alan Stout.
Start over, I, Alan Stout.
I, Alan Stout.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I support the following.
That I support the following.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Oregon.
The charter ordinances and rules of procedure for the city of Springfield.
The charter ordinances and rules of procedure for the city of Springfield.
I will faithfully and honorably.
I will faithfully and honorably.
Perform the duties of Ward Six councillor for the city of Springfield.
Form the duties of Ward Six councillor for the city of Springfield.
Congratulations, thank you.
Do you want to double check?
I think I got your name, okay. All right, raise your right hand. I, Sean Van Gordon.
Too many.
I, Sean Van Gordon.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I support the following.
That I support the following.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Oregon.
The charter ordinances and rules of procedure for the city of Springfield.
The charter ordinances and rules of procedure for the city of Springfield.
And I will faithfully and honorably.
And I will faithfully and honorably.
Perform the duties of mayor of the city of Springfield.
And perform the duties of the mayor of the city of Springfield.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I did it again.
We're going to follow instructions here too.
That's good.
All right. Okay. Guys, come on, come on into the wealth.
Oh, we're all in the wealth.
We get one picture together.
Follow instructions.
Oh, I have to give instructions?
Well.
Have the camera, yeah, bring it together.
Turn lighting sideways.
Bring it in a little.
What are we supposed to be looking at first?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I've been barging in every.
Line up, okay.
Add one.
Right here, everyone, right here, right here, right here. Great.
Now you can look over at me for one, nice big smile, one, two, three. You should do this for looking pretty.
Couple more here. Right here, everyone. Great.
All right, babe, don't go anywhere, come on. If you're a family, come on. I, I know.
In place. Yeah, maybe step behind her a little bit, perfect, good, good. And end a little bit more if we can, end there.
This is the one time.
There we go, come on, I know this family. There. Everyone right here, please.
Great. Thank you, now you can look over, see. Yeah, I know I'm not much to look at. Thank you.
All right, for the record, I am going to adjourn us for the next until 6:15, so feel free to stay here and mingle. I'm going to call the Springfield City Council work session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Weber.
Here.
Councillor Mo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Blackwell.
Here.
Councillor Doyle.
Here.
And councillor Stout.
Here, thank you.
Our work session item tonight, it's the code enforcement municipal code updates with Charlie Kent.
Good evening, Mayor and council, and happy new year. Effective code enforcement is critical to maintaining the health, safety, and quality of life in Springfield. The mission of our program is to promote a safe, clean, and thriving community by ensuring compliance with city codes through education, collaboration, and equitable enforcement practices, fostering a high quality of life for all residents and businesses in Springfield. Staff were first before council 18 months ago and presented a phased plan to implement changes in the program designed to increase or improve community service. We've come a long, long way since then. We're here today to discuss two key concepts presented in previous work sessions, specifically administrative civil penalties and a municipal nuisance code update. While current enforcement mechanisms such as warning, warnings, abatement, and civil prosecution serve important roles, the absence of administrative civil penalties limits the city's ability to efficiently address code violations. Some of our current challenges, am I too far away from the, the mic, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you okay.
Okay, my apologies. Some of our current challenges are limited deterrence, a strain on resources, and resolutions which are inefficient. Without timely financial consequences, many violators are not incentivized to properly promptly address code violations. This is particularly problematic for repeat offenders. Civil prosecution and court processes are time consuming and expensive, diverting resources from other city functions. Delayed compliance leads to prolonged public nuisances and potential safety hazards. This negatively and directly impacts neighborhoods and the community as a whole. The benefits of administrative civil penalties are enhanced compliance, more cost effective and proportional enforcement, and improved recovery of resources. Monetary penalties provide a clear and immediate incentive for property owners and businesses to comply with city codes. Administrative processes reduce the burden on courts and city staff, thereby streamlining the resolution of violations. And penalties can be scaled based on the severity and frequency of the violations, ensuring proportional consequences. And funds collected through penalties can be reinvested into enforcement programs or community improvements. Broadly speaking, the proposed framework includes a penalty structure and appeals process. ACPs are more of a community approach and allow officers to spend more time talking with folks than sitting in the office sending letters. This approach prioritizes public education and flexibility to address different hurdles that community members face when resolving these violations. The penalty structure establishes a tiered system of fines based on the nature and severity of the violation, with escalating penalties for repeat offenders. The appeals process is important and provides a clear and accessible process for violators to contest penalties, which ensures fairness and transparency. Pairing penalties with public education campaigns to inform residents and businesses about code requirements and the importance of compliance is important to, to build those types of relationships and, and provide some sort of outreach. Adding administrative civil penalties to Springfield's code enforcement toolbox will strengthen our ability to address violations efficiently, promote community well being, and reduce strain on city resources. There we go. And this brings us to the second issue I'd like to present and discuss today. Section 5.002 of the Springfield Municipal Code currently addresses the majority of violations handled by the code enforcement program. Staff have reorganized this section to address current issues more effectively, including the addition of provisions for dangerous abandoned or derelict structures. These structures present significant risk to public safety, community well being, and property values. Staff reviewed similar codes in Oregon cities identifying these key provisions. A clear prohibition of unsafe structures, immediate and temporary safeguards for imminent hazards, mandatory registration and maintenance plans for dangerous and vacant properties, fee structures and waivers to encourage compliance, and clear criteria for abatement by demolition, ensuring that we're following due process. And those are really the, the wave tops of the specific code for dangerous abandoned derelict structures. Some key concerns about these structures are public safety risks, neighborhood impacts, and long term economic costs. Unstable structures, exposed wiring, and unsecured access points, which pose risks to residents, emergency responders, and children are very real conditions and, and they're pretty hazardous. And unfortunately, Springfield has a tragic history regarding fire risks and unsecured abandoned structures. Abandoned buildings often attract unauthorized occupants, increasing the likelihood of fires. Community impacts are very real as well. They're not necessarily seen immediately, however, there are decreased property values and neighborhood decline in these blighted areas. Neglected structures lower adjacent property values and discourage investment in the city. And these properties become eyesores, reducing community pride and engagement. And there are associated economic costs as well. There's an increased enforcement burden and a taxpayer burden. Municipal resources are repeatedly spent on inspections and compliance efforts without mechanisms to recover costs outside of the formal process. The proposed code features definitions and classifications, enforcement mechanisms, and funding and cost recovery. There is clear criteria for identifying dangerous structures, and we'll use tiered classifications to prioritize actions based on that severity. Enforcement mechanisms, including inspection authority and owner accountability, to enhance inspectors' abilities to assess and document structural conditions. And we will also require owners to remediate or demolish noncompliant structures within specified timelines. Funding and cost recovery include lien authority and direct collection of fines to be deposited or placed into a special fund designed strictly for abatement of code violations. And additionally, staff intend to proactively educate property owners on compliance requirements and partner with community organizations to identify and prioritize these problem areas. The proposed updates to the Springfield Municipal Code include critical revisions and additions that aim to enhance public safety, improve operational efficiency, and align with national best business practices for managing dangerous abandoned or derelict structures. And with that, I'd like to open up for any questions or comments that you have.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate your, your continued work on this because I know we've had multiple conversations. And we're getting close. I think one of the things as I was reading through it and thinking about, and this could just be a matter of sort of just tracking it as it, as it happens. I'm interested to see, I mean, we were talking a lot about the, the cost abatement, like getting, you know, the, the fines and getting money back. And I, I know that we're, we're very much around, you know, that this is going to be complaint based. We're not going out and, and looking for things. However, because we're putting increased energy into this, I am curious as to whether or not it's costing us more as well. So somehow moving forward with this to kind of somehow be tracking the expenses to see if it ends up that we are pulling more money in that we can use for abatement, or if it's costing us more in terms of the administration and we're not getting to that like sweet spot. I'm assuming we will, but I just, I'm hoping we pay attention to that so that when we come back in a year or so and talk about it, we're like, oh yeah, we are getting our, a good bang for our buck, and we've invested all of this time and, and energy into this, and we're bringing money in that's helping to clean up the city, thank you.
All right, anybody else? Uh, thank Tori.
Um, thank you, so I just wanted to get a clarification on a couple of things. So the, the abandoned and derelict buildings, that is also still going to remain complaint driven. It's not going to be a city, is city staff going to determine that, or are you going to get a call from somebody?
It's going to be similar to our current standards, and, and this is in regards to a public safety issue. And so this won't be the same response to an employee complaining about a car parked on the front yard. This will be, this structure looked like it's falling down, and it's dangerous to other folks. So we won't be driving around the city looking for these specifically, but oftentimes our referrals come from the police department or the fire marshal's office based off of their concerns or neighbors, so it's, it is still strictly complaint initiated.
Okay, it is, it is still complaint, okay, great. And then when I was reading it, there's a, when I was looking at on the other side of this, and when we're talking about the persons in charge as opposed to the responsible person, I think that we, I think that councillor Pictionary had talked about the, the owner versus tenant and how that's going to play into how these fines are initiated. If you're going to be issuing those to the tenant who's there, and ultimately if they don't pay, is this going to land on the responsibility of the owner of the property who may be out of state? Or whatever, how are we, how are we working through that?
Sure, there's no change to our current procedure. Ultimately, if a citation is issued for violations occurring on a property, it's up to the owner to identify a tenant if we're not able to do so. So we don't have a property registration system whereby, you know, there's no, there's no data for us to sift through to locate who a tenant is outside of DMV records. I mean, we go to extremes to, to locate that tenant, including knocking on the front door, talking to neighbors, that sort of thing. So if that's the case, we will be in contact with the, the homeowner through official notices, warnings prior to any citation. So ultimately, yes, the, the violation will potentially land on the property owner. However, there is some flexibility within that to where we can negate any fines that are issued to them if that it's found, once we're able to identify that tenant.
Okay, yeah, because you know, the tenant laws have changed a lot too. And so it can kind of put a, a property owner, a landlord in a tough situation because they may have a tenant that's, that's doing other things and that they're not able to evict, that they're trying to evict. And in the process of that, then they're on top of that getting dinged for these things that are happening, you know, because of their tenant on the property and that. So I'm just, you know, trying to be sensitive to the fact that there's two sides of that. And so I know, I know it's, it's, it's tough because they do own the properties, but.
Sure, it's, it's not easy, and, and to be clear, we're looking for communication. If we're in communication about a resolution through the property owner with that bad tenant, we completely understand, it's, it's what we do, you know, so, so it's not an uncommon issue.
Okay, and then, sorry, I have a few written down here. When you, when we're talking about the changes to this going to the hearings official as opposed to the council, can you kind of explain that process and how that's changing or what that procedure is? What's not coming to council, what is going to the hearings official, kind of how that works?
Sure, and I can loosely speak to that, Mary Bridget, if you could as well.
Charlie, why don't you start, and then I'll fill in if you can say anything.
Hearings official is different in that these are folks contracted out who are familiar with the code or the principles of the code in, in the minutia. Instead of having council be the appeals process for these folks when it's more of a technical term of law, council is still, uh, uh, any, any sort of lien that, uh, code enforcement staff would go through for a nuisance violation. So like, if there's a, you know, a $10,000 fine that, that some property owner incurs, if I were to move forward with a lien on that property for that nuisance violation, I would need to come before council to get that approved.
Okay, yeah, and I'm familiar with how there's differences between hearings officials and like planning commissioner, you know, city council and, um, other types of stuff, so, yeah, I just wasn't sure on that. And then I think there was one other thing that I wanted to ask about. Oh, the, the, the staff member that you're wanting to add, the three quarter? Um, FTE, can you kind of explain how you know or can project that you're going to be able to pay for that position with this supposed increase in fine collection?
So, so to clarify, there's not necessarily a significant increase in collection of, of fines. You know, we're, we're not expecting six figures out of, out of this, and it's not to generate revenue. It's to recover costs more effectively and quicker. So a turnover currently through the municipal court is six to eight weeks before we hit trial, and then there's recovery on the back end of that. Right now, it's a $50 ticket versus a $500 ticket for the same violation. And that would be much more reasonable for somebody to, um, pay.
Okay.
Right out of the bat. Point seven five is in part due to the increase, the Tyler software. There's a payment processor that goes along with that where our current software platform is not, they don't talk to each other. And so if we were to try and use the current software, it wouldn't, it, it just wouldn't work out. Additionally, we're already very understaffed in terms of the administrative needs for the program. The administrative civil penalties would work as a front counter staff similar to what court does and manage the financial documents and impacts there as well. So point seven five, we're currently at point two five.
Okay.
We could easily be at point five right now with just collecting new complaints and, and improving our efficiency out in the field. The addition is, we're expecting a similar number of code complaints next year, code cases. And so I'm trying to, trying to figure out, you know, how, how much administrative time per code complaint, and then you throw everything else in there, and, and so point seven five was my best guess.
So are you increasing, are you, are you increasing with a new person, or are you increasing the hours of an existing person?
Potentially the hours of an existing person, and I believe, and Jeff can probably speak to this a little bit better, that we've reorganized internally, and we'll potentially add a, another FTE to CMD as a whole, thereby relieving some of that pressure from our current administrative.
That's all I had in question, so, yeah.
Can explain it. Jeff Pascal, Community Development Director. So to the question of how we're going to add point seven five FTE to the community development or to the code enforcement is internal restructuring. So we have the FTE already authorized and approved through the budget. We have a couple of positions that we still haven't gotten through the hiring process yet, but looking at how to change up some roles of some folks, combine some roles that are more similar, and, and just how can we become more efficient with those staff?
And Jeff, can, just for you guys to clarify, you're not asking us for permission at FTEs, right?
No, though, again, like I said, it would be within the current FTE we already have approved in the FY25 budget.
Right, but from a policy perspective, right, even though we're talking about all the elements, that's the city manager's. She's making the call.
Correct.
Okay. And that was more for, for the rest of us to just gauge about what we're agreeing to. We're not agreeing to add FTEs because Nancy would make that decision. All right, I've got, does anybody have other, go ahead, Alan.
So I, I had a question, I was reviewing the session from February 20th, and what came back to us, I believe, recovery, it was mentioned, the recovery percentages for like when somebody, when there's a fine, what they're able to recover is only about 10% of the actual amount fined, is that correct? It's. For the current system. Of current standards, yes, it's, it's approximately 10%. So I'm curious, what, what do you expect that to jump up to? Because I'm hopeful that, you know, whether it's either, if it's a property manager, man, property matter, a property infraction, why wouldn't it be a relatively streamlined process to get from the infraction that you're having the administrative person take care of right into a lien? Or if it's a, if it's another violation, immediately turning it over to collections if they're not interested in paying it right away? I just, has that, has that collections question come to your way? Because if the fine is valid, the fine should be paid, and I'm not interested in a 10% return because I think the average was about $100 per infraction, and if you're doing 10 infractions per day, and you're doing 260 working days per year, my mental math is saying, okay, the maximum you could recover is 260, oh, 26,000 because we're only recovering 20. my mental math is saying, okay, the maximum you could recover is 260, oh, 26,000 because we're only recovering 10%, of this. 26,000 is a very low number to recover. So I was just curious if you could speak to how might we increase our recovery percentage? Because I think that would be a really valuable thing if we're spending the money and the time on, on the person doing the work, say, hey, I must see an increase in that. And likewise, if it's a property infraction, I'd be very happy to see a lot of liens against properties in Springfield so that when they do change hands, it's a lot easier to recover those funds.
I think the, the larger return is going to come off of liens. These chronic nuisance properties where you're getting, you know, anywhere from 10, I think the highest one I've had is about 110, 115,000. There needs to be some alignment in who is being cited. And the short answer is it depends. If, if the responsible party is the one that's being cited and is the property owner, there's very few code enforcement cases where that's the case and where that's recoverable. The, there are significant amounts that we should pursue and that we're going to pursue, largely speaking. However, the, the process is new to code enforcement. It, it wasn't a historical process that we used. And through abatement, we've been able to figure out that internal process. And we've successfully, I think we're number five or number six of our abatement where we've, where I think we've got the gears rolling pretty well. In terms of a more of a recovery of day-to-day citations or tickets, if you will, I expect there to be an increase proportionate to the fine amount. So what I mean is if, you know, there's a, a small or maybe a low hurdle violation occurring, our current model is that we issue a $500 ticket for the first offense, $1,000 afterwards. And it's about every three weeks that we would issue that, that citation. In between there, there's maybe one or two inspections that occur at a time of about a hundred dollars per inspection or so to staff. If we're able to address those directly upfront with two or three inspections and recover $50 for the time spent, we're actually going to see that money. When we go to court and we set these large fine amounts, it's really difficult to recover those through the folks that we're issuing these citations to sometimes. And payment plans as little as 25 or 50 a month are very common. And so when you get into a six-figure type violation, it's, I don't know, it's like trying to clear the ocean with a spoon.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
I hope, I hope that helps.
I just, sorry, want a little clarification on the homeowner tenant situation. So if, if the tenant is in violation, cars on the yard or something, then you notify, the first person you notify is the property owner, correct? Not, not the tenant? Or you try to do that simultaneously?
We do it simultaneously.
Okay. And do you let the homeowner know that you've made contact with the tenant?
By letter, yes.
By letter.
If we have a phone number, some, some other sort of communication, we'll use that as well.
Okay. And is there a certain amount of time, I would assume for them to respond to you by, if you send a letter and you don't get any response? Is there another letter sent to the homeowner?
There's for, it, it depends on the severity of the, the issue. Typically, there's a, an initial warning. Our, our current process is one, two, three notices, warning, final warning of violation. Then we'll issue the citation, trying to pare that down for a quicker response.
And is the citation to the homeowner then or the tenant? If you've made contact with the tenant, but not the homeowner is, I'm just trying to get clarification. I guess how that part works.
We always try and cite the responsible party. And so that's determining who's causing the violations or allowing them to exist. And, and so predominantly, if that, if we're talking about a rental situation, that's almost always the renter.
I just was thinking, I would hate to see the homeowner possibly not responding. Maybe they live out of area and where they've changed addresses or something to that effect and not being able to get ahold of them. And then the tenant not paying and it leading to a possible lien on the house. Is there a path that that doesn't happen, I guess, because of?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So a lien happens six months to a year after the actual fines are, are levying and they're not collected. It takes quite a bit of time.
Sure.
So no, there's, there's almost zero chance of, of a property owner getting a lien against their property for a tenant.
From a tenant violation.
Correct.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. A couple, I guess, of comments of like, this is progressing very nicely. I think we're ready to take it to a public hearing and start down that adoption process. The two areas that, I don't know if it's a question or it's a concern, but from a policy perspective, there's a lot of discussion about using fines that we were, that we recover to fund the program. And one of the things I think is really important is to sort of separate those things so that we're not explicitly adopting a policy where we're saying the way we're going to fund the pro, this program is by finding fines from people, right? We were choosing to have a program, you know, we're recovering dollars from that. And then, you know, how the program gets funded is budgetary, is, is a budgetary issue.
Yes. So none of the, the fines or any amount recovered will go directly to salaries or anything like that. That's used as seed money for future abatement projects. So, you know, we, we've got to front the money for any contracting services and that's in a special 204 account.
Okay. The other question that I had that was brought up is you mentioned that some of these, it is clearly still a complaint-driven process. And we're probably going to ask you this 50 more times before it's done about the importance of it being complaint-driven. But you did bring up that, that some of those complaints come from PD, right? They're, you know, engaging with folks and, you know, they notice stuff that is, that is sort of health and safety related, right? Which is good. Is, my question is, when you think about complaints coming from other parts of the city, which probably includes fire as well, are we seeing the whole range? Are they sort of just giving you the, hey, this is the health, safety, like if it's explicitly health, safety danger, but if the lawn's too, too long, right? Like, we're not, we're not generating those types of complaints.
No, not, not lawn. These, these are health and safety complaints. I can't think of any that, that aren't, that are, they're all, and fairly immediate.
Yeah. So the way I would think about it is, is if we have city employees out there, they're, they've interfaced with the public over something that's happened. And then they're looking at it and saying, this is so dangerous. I really need to, you know, I really need to report it for public safety. Okay, perfect. And I'm assuming you are still getting some, it's not just PD that is giving you those types of concerns, right? Every once in a while, you're getting an amount of fire as well.
That's correct.
Okay. Good. Good. Perfect. So then what are our next steps? So you're good to go to a public hearing. What are we doing from here?
January 22nd, we're, we're scheduled to bring it forward. If there's no clarification on code language or anything, that's, that's what I'll present. We also have a, we've been working with some staff about outreach or an education component to this as well. And I think we're ready to pull the trigger on that fairly soon. So I don't know if that should come prior to that public hearing. I'm assuming, I'm assuming it would.
I would assume so too, but that might be a different, different conver, you know, conversation internally. Okay. Perfect. Any other questions before we wrap up? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna, I'm going to turn the work session. We will reconvene at seven o'clock for the regular session. I'm going to call the Springfield City Council regular session to, to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Webber.
Here.
Counselor Mo. Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Blackwell.
Here.
Counselor Doyle.
Here.
Counselor Stout.
Here. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
There are two times designated for public testimony this evening under public hearings and business from the audience. If you are attending in person, please complete the request to speak card located at the front of the council chambers and turn it into the city reporter. If you're joining us online with a tablet, smartphone or computer and wish to speak at either of those times, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The order of the public testimony is as follows. Anyone in person in the council chambers and then anyone who has raised their virtual hand. First item, please.
First item, mayor, is the consent calendar.
I move to approve the consent calendar. Second?
Yes, Counselor Webber.
Yes.
Counselor.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Blackwell.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Aye.
And Counselor Stout.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses and zero nos. I'd also like to note that it was included, the proclamation for the election results. So I wonder if we did that in the wrong order. All right. Next item, please.
Next item is business from the audience.
I don't have any cards. Do we have any hands in Zoom?
Yes, we have one hand and that is for Jason Profit. And Jason, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Okay. So two, two quick things.
State your name for the record and your location in the city.
Yeah, Jason Profit, Corey Road. Our, our ambulance services being contracted up to Vancouver, Washington, they do not accept debit cards to make the payments with. I don't understand why we can't keep that service in Lane County somewhere, walk into the counter and make the payment. It sounds like, it sounds like they've changed companies. The last company was able to take a debit card. And my next item is I support the Christmas parade. I think that's a really good family deal that prayed with $10,422 in overtime. I think that's great for the city employees for Christmas money. But I can't understand why it takes 30 days to get South Third patched. And we're going on a year that there's still snow break on South Fourth. Probably take, take the crew maybe two hours to clean that snow break up. And then I still have some of subs cut up wire down here, very, very into Corey. You know, it, it's kind of remote, not a lot of people come to here, but I would like to keep it picked up and cleaned. So that's, that's all, that's my, my two cents worth. I'd like to see the billing for the ambulance come back to Lane County. And like you say, I support the, the Christmas parade, but I can't understand spending that money and not be able to get the holes in the road patch and Christmas or ice, ice storm stuff picked up.
Is that it, Jason?
That's, that's it.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else with their hand raised?
No other hands for this item.
All right. Is there any council response for the public testimony? I will ask the question about the debit card. That seems odd to me. Go ahead, Nancy.
I can briefly speak to this issue. At least for the city of Springfield, we did some efficiencies in our ambulance billing services and we do use an external agency for that as a cost-saving measure. So yes, the provider was changed for that. As far as the details of using a debit card, I would have to look into that specifically, but I can confirm that we, as a resource savings, changed the provider.
Yeah. Could you maybe ask them about that one and just let us know? Go ahead, Corey.
And you're talking about the, the billing service, right? So just wanting to clarify that that's not that the, the ambulance company is out of there, but it's the company that's handling the billing, which can be somewhat complicated.
Yes, Counselor Riley, thank you for that clarification. Ambulance billing is separate entirely from Eugene Springfield Fire and our provision of ambulance services.
All right.
Jeff Nelson just walked into the room. So Jason, the sub issue needs to go to the sub board for, to resolve that. But Jeff, their general managers just walked into the room. So we're just going to take a second and share the feedback. Up on Corey Road, there's still damaged wire from a fallen, from a fallen power pole. And that's what the public testimony was about. But if, Jason, if you want to email the sub board or email sub, they should be able to help you with that. Next item, please.
Next item is business from the city council. Item number one is mayor and council committee assignments in there. And Allison Plio, these are your items.
Well, they, they gave me responsibility. They said I had to share the assignments this year. I tried to give them all to Beth, but they said I couldn't do that. In front of you, you've got the list. I did make one typo in the original version of that. So this is our opportunity to see if, we don't have to do anything with this. But if you have questions about my thinking, my logic, or if that's a corrected assignment, this would be a good time to bring it up. The other two things I want everybody to keep in mind is this, if you have a committee that you are not, that you are not assigned through, through me. So like Corey has that LOC committee, if you can let somebody know so we can put it on this list. Like Corey said, on an LOC committee last year, I sit on a state board that we've got to put on here. It would help the entire city to have that one complete list of all the committee assignments that you have. So take a look. Does anybody have questions about the committee assignment list? Go ahead.
The only thing I would ask is that there's some way to tie the, the assignments to our calendar. Because like the historic commission that I'm on, it's kind of a weird one, though it's like every other month on a Thursday at four. And somehow it just kind of like fell off of what I do. And they had said, oh, well, you know, there's not really a lot for you to do. And then I kind of was so overwhelmed at first that I sort of like let that go. And I'd really like to get back on track to doing that. And so I was going to reach out to Tom, but it'd be nice if we could have those on the calendar. I put them in my phone, but like, you know, the sub board is, you know, this particular Wednesday. And, and then planning commission is every, you know, first and third and like that kind of thing. So it would be really helpful.
So Counselor Doyle, we can certainly have our staff pre-populate your individual council calendar to reflect your new committee assignments. And this is a good time to do it. New year. So.
Thank you.
That was my one ask too, would be with the new assignments is to, to, to send them out. Other things about committee assignments to keep in mind. The one, the one committee assignment that I know is coming that we haven't got the ask for, at some point this year, the county's going to have an ambulance task force. So I would expect the request for somebody from our, our council to come up for that as well. All right. Also, Nancy, before we switch topics, finance and judiciary. Right? The legislative council committee does a, has a pretty good rhythm to meet. Finance and judiciary has been one that we've struggled with a little last year because it's sort of turned into a, an ad hoc meeting. If you can just prompt, like make and just choose a day, like, and just have us meet from the, from that, that point on.
Certainly, we will get that in a time certain and follow up with you there to make sure that that works with your calendar as well.
No, I'm not on the committee, so don't follow up with me about it.
Oh, all right. I stand corrected.
But, yeah, like this is the finance side, I guess.
Is that how you reorganize the days?
Yes, let's go with that as an answer. All right. Any other questions about committees? Okay. Before we change topics again, a lot of committee changes. If this, if we get a month into this or two months in and it doesn't work with your work schedule or personal schedule, please let me know and we'll, we'll get it moved around. All right. Any other council business? I've got a couple of other things, but I want to open this up. Open. Go ahead, Corey.
I raised my hand because it's habit, but also I just wanted to say that, and a lot of it will be coming before this council. And I know that some folks haven't seen it before, but we did a lot of work around housing with the Home Governance Consortium in December. I was at many a meeting. I was at many a meeting around, and Aaron's not here to attest to that. But there's some exciting projects. We still have some, an RFP out for a piece of property that we have here in Springfield. So fingers crossed around that. And all of that will come before you. But it's just, I, I just am just continually excited. And I know we're not moving fast enough. But we just are increasingly seeing these projects and finding the funding and being able to put together the funding to, for affordable housing. So it was a lot of work in December after we were supposedly all in break. However, it was really exciting and I'm, can't wait for you all to see them. Thanks.
All right. The one item that I had was the Finance Stability Committee, which is the mayor's committee on financing, is going to start meeting the 15th of January. And then it's going to go either eight or nine meetings from there. So it's going to meet every Wednesday from that point until they're finished. As that, we should be as a council getting a report from them at that. And that will be the basis of forming the, the finance strategy. My one ask, and then I'll open it up for questions. Nancy is going to send out the material every week or have somebody send it out to your accounts that covers all the material that, that this committee is seeing. It should include the roster and answer some additional questions that you might have. The other, the other ask that I have would be, hey, go through the material, ask plenty of questions. I'm not planning on attending. I'm asking you guys not to go to it. We're asking for an unfiltered opinion and, you know, and that will give us an opportunity to really just sort of step back, let the committee do its work and then come to us with their best recommendations. Does anybody have questions about this? All right. Go ahead, Corey. You missed my, my left head tilt.
I have a question, and I already shared this with you, but I just wanted to share it with the rest of the council that I, I really appreciate that we're going to be informed as this is moving forward. And I hope that the general public is also going to be informed of the, the kind of story of how this is happening. Because I think it's, one, I appreciate the democratic process of getting the feedback from folks from all over the community. And I, I want, when we get to the, whatever the recommendations are going to be, I want people to see that it's been this very transparent, public, hopefully really robust and involved process. Because I, I just, I think we really need the problem solving around it. And I hope that folks are paying attention as we move through this. So thank you.
All right. Last call for council business. Next item, please.
Any business from the city manager?
Yes, just a couple of things. First of all, tonight, I just want to congratulate our, our new councillor member, councillor Stout. And also our re-elected council members, thank you for your service to this community. And I just want to remind our city that our city council put in a lot of time and dedication to the operation of making difficult choices for the good of everybody in the city. And they do this as volunteers. And that is very unusual. And, you know, I think sometimes people forget, because they do their job so well, that in fact, they don't get paid for that. So I just wanted to do that reminder. Also, with respect to the mayor's financial stability task force, you know, I'm really excited about this project. I want to thank the members of our community that have volunteered to give their time and their expertise. I feel like we have a very well-rounded group of individuals that are all very committed to our community and, and making good choices. You know, I've been asked, hey, is this all pre-baked? Do you just have us something that you want us to rubber stamp? And the answer to that is unequivocally, no, it is not. This is us asking our members of our community and then vetting it forward to you, the council, on what our future is as we move ahead. And so I just wanted to reassure the public, there, there is no pre-described outcome. This truly is a thoughtful process. And I for one believe that when we have a difficult situation, we can call on members of this community to come together and come through. And we can do hard things. And so that's been my message. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is business from the city attorney. There's one item, city council president appointment, and that's Mary Bridget Smith.
Mayor and council, this is the time in the council's calendar where you select a council president. This is the person who runs the meeting when the mayor is absent. Also generally does the motions and then has a hand in setting the agenda. It's a two-year position. So this, um, process for this is the councillors can make nominations. It's a nomination, doesn't need a second, so nobody has to second it. And then once you're, close the nominations, then you can vote. If there's more than one nomination, when Neil calls the vote, just say the name of the person that you want to select to be council president. If there's only a nomination for one person, we'll just vote like you normally vote. Does that make sense process wise and next steps?
Any questions? Discussion before we start.
Is there an opportunity for discussion before the vote? Missed that, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah. We can discuss and then into, into, depending on where the council is. Discuss something?
First meet, uh, first meeting back. We'll get better at this. All right. Anybody want to jump in?
Mr. Mayor. I'd like to nominate, after, after reviewing the council actions and the meetings and paying attention for the last year or so, reviewing a lot of things, I'd like to nominate Counselor Michelle Weber to the position of president.
All right. Anybody else or any discussion? Go ahead.
Does Michelle now have to accept that position?
Yeah, this would be the. I'm just, I'm just curious.
Good question.
First time.
Yeah, this would be the time for the person to either say, you know, yay or nay, like I don't want to do it, or I don't have capacity, or I do. But yeah, that's a good point. We've had that happen before. It's curious. Yeah.
All right.
Would you like me to weigh in then?
Yeah, that would be nice.
If, if the council and if that's what the council thinks is the best decision for moving this council forward for the next two years and for our community, I'm honored to, to be considered.
All right. You, you brought, you, you brought this question about discussion up and, all right.
I just, I, I had the, Mary, Mary Bridget send me the description of kind of what the council president does and like what their duties are. And it's, it sounds like that they kind of represent and help when it comes to the agenda, kind of like what they feel the council. I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm still a little bit vague on what they're doing besides reviewing the agenda and stepping in for you. Like, I don't know, do they represent like the rest of us on the council and make sure that we are informed of stuff before the agenda? Do they inform you of like, hey, I think maybe you might hear something from Steve or Victoria about this one particular item. So you might, you know, and let staff know that maybe they should be prepared. I, you know, I don't know. What do they do?
Do you guys want to offer a technical answer before I, you know, add what the, what the sausage making?
Sure. So the technical answer would be according to the operating policies and procedures, the council president will, let me see if I have this right, has, has a say in items that can be put on the agenda. I think if the mayor wants to put something on the agenda, then the council president has the opportunity to weigh in or provide feedback about that. You know, I've seen, I mean, just kind of getting off technical now, I've seen council presidents approach their jobs in different ways over the years. So it really depends. And I think it depends on the mayor and the city manager as well.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And I just want to say too, that out of all of the councillors here, Counselor Weber is the only one that expressed an interest to me, like personally. And so I think that's important. So thank you for being willing, for being willing.
And, and I'll, and I'll offer some context, right? Like, there's very few times that my, my role is different than the, like, is the councils, we're different, we're different bodies. And I always tell people that, well, everybody finds their own way to do, be, be council president. But I think the two important things that I would have considered is, hey, who's going to represent broadly your interests, right? Because if, you know, either in a pinch or in council leadership, right? Like that question you just brought up, which is, hey, you know, how, who's going to represent my concerns? That, that comes up. And then, you know, if for some reason I'm not here or can't make something, that person is the first person that would step into that role or have the first option to step into, into that role. And in the, you know, it's, and those are, I guess, two important ways to think about it. And then widely, you know, as I, I traditionally have kind of relied on whoever's on council president just for, you know, advice and to bounce ideas off of and, and things like that. All right. Anybody else? All right. Neil, would you call the vote, please?
Yes. Counselor Weber.
Myself.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes. Actually, sorry. Can we just procedurally stop? So we have a nomination on the floor for Counselor Weber to be the council president. So we can clean this up a little bit and, or make it a little easier. If there's a motion that Counsel Weber is the president and then Neil can call the role like he normally would. So, okay. Yeah, I know. Well, it will get better.
Put them in the form of a motion.
I move to nominate Michelle, Counselor Michelle Weber to the position of council president.
Yes, we're in a minute, second, no.
Second.
All right, Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Blackwell.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Yeah.
And Counselor Stout.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero nos, and that would make Counselor Weber the council president. Thank you. Do you have any more items? All right. Thank you, everybody. Good night. We are adjourned.